2019, in the council chambers at 803 West Howard in the city of Alpine, Texas. For the purpose of considering the task agenda, this notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Public notice, the use of cellular phones or prohibited in the city council chamber during meetings of the city council. Members of the audience, we provide an opportunity to address the council with any agenda item after determination of a form and proof of no subject. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. Please write your name on the list so we may call you in order. In order, okay. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address. If you have petition, other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. The state law judge prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic of future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personnel, the tax on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and the city council member may call point to order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. Call this meeting to the city secretary. Do we have a forum?
Ah, mayor, we do have a forum with an excuse absence from Lucy Escobar for budget. She will be here at 5:30. The notice was posted at 5:00 PM on November 15, 2019.
Okay. Turn it over to you, city manager.
All right. All right, we're in our city council. Thank you. And your packets that were sent out. We did, did a couple things. Based on our workshop the last meeting, the outcome of that was pull together the draft amendment to the budget and present that to council. So Megan and I went back, took a look at all the inputs from the surveys, looked at the inputs from staff, looked at what, you know, what we had as far as approved budget, and worked through some of the modifications to that. Primary goal in pulling this budget together, number one was to ensure that our revenues and our expenses matched, right? So we operated certainly within the budget. And in so doing, we tried to take what were specific projects or capital-type requests and insert them into the actual budget and fund them from the year's budget. What we're going to look at through the course of this fiscal year is other larger-scale projects that we can look at our fund balance or equity positions and other funds. We'll come back with specific requests on those. And as we kind of go through this afternoon, I'll talk about some of the specific, the three probably most specific requests that have come up. So that was the overall tenet of how we were handling pulling this budget together. Then, you know, Megan put together the 2019-2020 amended budget highlights. That was in your packet, it was kind of top page. It showed what we were looking for, we're looking at across all the different departments of funds, and then specifically general fund, water, airport, hot and gas funds. One of the pieces that we had discussed at the workshop was from a wage increase, do we look at 3%, do we look at 5%? What we built this amended budget on was a 5% increase in salaries. But I also like to clarify that, and what we talked about with our department heads today is, it's not that across the board, everybody gets 5%. That's a 5% per department, so that gives the department head the ability to look at each individual employee. And we have some employees that were impacted by the compression. So, you know, they might have been at $13.75 or $14 an hour, and when we raised minimum up to $13.50, all these other folks got raises, but they were already above that. So we want to make sure we take action on those employees. As well as in our water, wastewater, and gas, we're getting more and more certifications with our team members there. So we want to be able to reward that. So the idea was that 5% bucket, then the department head will determine based on, do we need to handle compression, do we need to handle some of the licensing certifications? Explain that to our department heads again today too, so that we don't get this message out that everybody's getting 5% raise, because some employees just simply don't want. We are looking at more of kind of what's that base amount, as long as they're performing, not on a performance plan, you know, is that 2%, is that two and a half? Probably be somewhere around that. Overtime, we also looked at overtime differently. If you're in a utility department, we get callouts after hours, obviously their budget's going to be a little bit more from an overtime perspective. And then, you know, some of the departments, we really didn't budget overtime at all. I look at administration where Cynthia and I sit, it's just not a need for overtime. The other thing that I think is a high bar item is some of the financial policy around reserve funds. We removed that in the budget, so you'll see those line items zeroed out. The idea was, let's work on a balanced budget this year. Let's take what some of our fund balances are, attach it to specific projects, and move forward from there. And as I talk about where our fund balance and where equity positions are, that's a piece that Megan is still working through to get exact numbers for us. There's been some settling that's had to occur since she's come back. We feel like we'll be in good shape by the time the auditors are, are here the first week of January. We also, you know, as we've talked about, you know, I think everybody is, we chatted and looked at surveys, you know, painting was certainly that high bar item. That's probably what we'll get the most community complaints on. The budget is up north of $1.2 million. We also did that $150,000 transfer into reserve at the end of last year. I think we're going to be in the more of the $1.45 range of our need this year, but we will address that when we get final bids in on street rebuilds in the January, February, October, November. You know, also, and I apologize, I thought I had sent out that spreadsheet a week ago. I didn't send it out till yesterday, but what we did is we took that listing of streets that was rated by PCI, and Leslie went through and grouped them by streets. Because it's a lot easier to say, okay, what does Seventh Street look like from the elementary all the way out to Fort Davis? Not this discombobulated one page to page 14 to page 19. So we did that for everybody. Eddie and I are going to go out Friday, do a final kind of walkthrough and do some of our own recommendations, probably 35 to 40 that we think absolutely, and then probably 125 to 150 that we'd like to SealCo. I'll highlight those and send those out to all of you, so that you'll have a good look at that as well. One of the other things that was included in your packet that I thought was a fantastic chart was that combined budget summary. Because I think that gives you a great visual as you look down through it and say, what did we approve on the left, what are we proposing to amend to on the right? You will notice that there is some increase in the general fund revenues. Reason for that is, when we went back and looked at our enterprise utilities, I wanted to make an adjustment based on what we're seeing as far as water usage and gas usage to reflect what we believe we were going to do in revenues this year. Because there's an administrative fee that comes off of that, back into the general fund, then that pushed up an increase there. You know, overall, we're looking at about a $13.3 million budget, identified the streets, you know, we've got a $1.28, I think we're going to go up to about $1.45. We should be able to cover that with, for the most part, with what we put in financial reserve. We won't move that money without coming back to council on a specific request, okay? And we're really focused on line item management, especially these larger projects. It helps on the administration side for our finance. If we call out a project, we have a specific line item, and then we spin down off that One thing to note, bouncing back to our airport, and we adjusted the fuel prices towards the tail end of last fiscal year, our first month numbers are in. And so through 8.3% of the year, we captured 13% on revenue. So our revenues are up in the airport. Goal there, obviously, because it's mostly, it's all fuel, our cost of fuel's going to go up a little bit, but we're going to drive a better margin, which the overall goal is, can we do some self-funding on these tech stock mediation projects instead of having to go back to the gas fund and ask for a net, net equity transfer? So good news on that. You know, just other, were some, some other minor adjustments. You know, the last real sheet that was included before the line, or the page by page, was the, you know, I call it the current account balance or our checking account balance sheet. It's the specified activity report. I always like to look at this monthly. It identifies how each fund is really doing. We do have due to's and due from's based on payroll, so when you see negatives in there, most of that is captured as a due to on an account. Generally speaking, our general fund is not a $208,000. If we get our payments in from water, gas, and others, then that, that account is actually quite a bit healthier than that, so. I think from here, I'd like to, we kind of open it up for questions and dialogue. Any questions?
On the first page, I just noticed a couple of different names, or the, the budget summaries. On the, on the police line, there's a big difference in what was for the revenue, and there's a $19,000 to $3,000. I was wondering why that was such a big difference, if there was a, if there was a reason.
Yeah.
I can answer it, yeah?
You know, you know I'll stop your head, I had to look back.
So on the police account, the prior year, they budgeted the FDED and the abandoned vehicle line items in the general fund. They're actually two separate reserve accounts that are specific to law enforcement, so it didn't seem proper to put the funding in the general fund when it's not general fund. The general fund can't use it. It has to be used by law enforcement. So that was removed, and then the expense side was removed as well.
Can I ask another question? Because I just, I just couldn't, I was probably going to be silly, but I was seeing that a lot of on the transfers throughout the whole thing, that they were zeroed out, and I just didn't, I don't, I don't really understand what, I'm sure it's simple, but I just didn't know.
So the prior year budget had transfers where we were using, so in order to record, to balance the budget, if we're using the fund balance, it went towards a transfer, because that money had to be transferred into the general fund. If we were using the reserve accounts that were established, like we did for the wastewater, which is still there, the money has to be transferred in to pay it out. So the money's coming from a different source, but it's all internal.
Okay.
Those are the transfers you're talking about?
Yeah. I just wasn't sure what it was.
Yeah, so we didn't use any fund balance or net position. The only thing we used was for the sewer further, that one grant that we have a loan part on, and that we pull from the reserve to pay. Because they won't let us pay it all off at once.
Derek, I do have one question on the non-departmental expenses. And on the line item number 2102 to 2105 on page 14, I noticed that the library subsidy for this year went up, not, not that much, but the family crisis center, I remember at one point we, we discussed the center and potential subsidies for it, but I noticed that we dropped it. And I've forgotten the reason why. From what I've heard, it's a good center, it provides good services to the city of Alpine. But why it was dropped, I don't know. Can't remember.
Yeah, that was, that was dropped out of the adopted budget from last year, from the 2019. So I, I don't know why it dropped yet.
I'm thinking, Councilor Leveson, that they were dropped because we did not have a council member to sit on the board, so that's why the children advocacy was gone, and so was the family crisis center. Since then, they have put Maria on, on the family crisis center, and no one has gone on to the child advocacy. So the previous was that if we didn't have someone there to, to make decisions with the funding that was provided by the city, then we were not going to fund them at all.
Did we ever get a signed contract? Because I know that a partial check was cut last year.
For the crisis center?
Yes, like during that last part of the year.
I think that's the only one.
But I don't know if there was ever a signed contract.
I think there was. I remember it all happened, like all at once. It all happened.
Yeah, there was a contract.
There is some.
Super fast.
Yeah. It happened really fast when you went on board.
Them not having anybody to represent the council, I think Councilor Escobar had volunteered, and she was giving the paperwork to fill out, and she didn't. And that's why they never had one.
Actually, I think what happened was that, yes, there had been a recommendation for Councilor Escobar to go in, and then, if I recall, and you can correct me on this, Councilor Leveson, was that the crisis center actually invited Councilor Leveson to also attend and to submit, and I think after all that was said and done, neither one of them wanted to sit on the board, and that's when Maria was actually asked to join. And I think it was Sarah Strupoli that reached out to me, correct?
Yeah. Because I had, she had, well, actually, she contacted me about it, and saying that she had heard anything from Councilor Escobar, so she looked like I reached out again.
So since we're talking about this, is there somebody, this, does this council person needs, need to be on the board for the children's advocacy center as well?
That was something that I think was just done internally. I don't think there's anything in our policies, there ain't policy that states that someone needs to sit on it. Am I wrong?
Our children's advocacy, we give, I think, $5,000.
So that was all changed. Mick McKamie did this whole speech about how we can't support groups that do fundraising, and you have to be representatives, and, and it kind of became a sore spot. And I think that the city was trying to address one at a time, but there, there was that contract that was established that basically said the city would be able to allocate money if they met these requirements, including providing financial statements to make sure the money was going to where it's supposed to be.
So I think what we ended up doing when Maria went on the family crisis center board, we approved the contract and the allocation of the money. Frankly, I think it's a little oversight, the $43 to our $4,300.
I think it was more than that.
Yeah, so, but we have a contract that we agreed to in council.
And I can check on that.
It was not included in the 2018-19 budget. It was a request that came on board. We worked our way through. Cynthia went through the right sequence because of the discussions we had back and forth, and Maria finally ran up and says, I'll do it. So the contract became legitimate, the money was allocated, but since it wasn't in the budget, it doesn't surprise me, we didn't put a line out of there, so we probably go back to the terms. Because that contract was supposed to be in place, as I recall, it was a three-year contract that we allocated based upon the annual budget of the citizens.
And I believe that we signed checks, what, two weeks ago for that?
Probably two.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting their money.
So I think that's all we're going to look at. And, and it's a hole because it wasn't in the 2018-19 budget, and we use that as the basis for the 19-20 budget.
So how much per year were we allocating?
It was in the contract, you know, contract specifically we find.
And then it'll be accepted.
We'll be allowing, we'll go back.
I think that's, yeah, Eric, once they pull the contract, we'll commit it to it, and that's what I'll go back to. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. So we'll, once we find what that amount is, we'll go back through and pull out of our lineup?
Yeah. And the only other question I have is on page 24, line item 6,003. I noticed that the Sunshine House building maintenance allotment went down from $7,000 proposed to the final allotment $2,000, which is $5,000 less. And I'm just curious, the allotment that we give the Sunshine House, what is it for? What are, what are the maintenance fees that are included with that?
That's just maintaining that vacant building over there.
It's not the Sunshine House, it's our building, of which we spent $182 last year on.
What, behind quarters?
Yeah.
It's the Sunshine House building, not the actual organization.
Oh, okay. The essential, okay, I'm getting this mixed up. The Sunshine House is, is the service, the social service providing meals or?
Those are rules.
Okay. How much are you providing them this year? None?
No. The Sunshine House was, they used to sit in our Sunshine House building.
Right.
And once they turned in, they're, they.
Not in here?
Not the new one, no. This was for them being in the actual Sunshine House.
So the $2,000 is to the old house? But what is it for?
Maintenance.
Just general things that might come up, if they had a broken pipe or.
A broken truck or something coming in there.
The reason I bring that up is I got an interesting call, I think maybe some other people did too. From a resident, they were saying that I was very, very happy with these, these meal services that are pre-provided to senior citizens, both at the new Sunshine House Center as well as the meal and meals program. And, but somehow through the great wine, he found out that, I guess the people who work there really get a very minimal salary compared to the work that they do, the great services they provide. And I got the call saying, well, can the city provide a subject, additional funding so that the salaries can be increased? I said, I don't think so, but I'll look at the budget, and I'll bring it to council's attention. And I, and I, it seems to be the city do not provide any additional funding for salaries. That comes through the, I guess, the operating, not proper organization. So if the individual wants to voice his opinion, he should go to their meeting.
Yep. That's such an awkward.
Are they a government entity? No, they're, they're a 501(c)(3).
They're a 501(c)(3) as a legal entity. They do apply for grants, and the grants they get from the federal government to be able to secure their meals on wheels, they pay about $6.70 per meal. So, yeah, that's.
And you pay $5 a meal if you want wheels to go to your house?
Yeah. Which are all volunteers.
I wanted to ask you about the neighborhood center. I saw that there was a big increase on, but we were, I mean, it was adopted already, but I was just wondering if they were, if you guys were going to do spring modeling? Like, I know we talked about.
What's that, what's that project we got, keep up in there?
That is for the third year in a row, a new air conditioning.
Yeah. Yeah. It's been a disaster.
Yeah, our buildings are.
Yeah, for all through that.
And it's been demolished. Wouldn't that have fared?
Yeah.
They've never updated the HBA, so you'd have to.
Yeah, it's a signal.
It's a nice location for the park, it's really.
Yeah.
But there. So, thank you, Dick.
So we keep going down this way, man?
Yeah. So I have three things, Eric. One, you might want to share with council where we are on debt, in terms of what that total number is, because I think it's an important number that we all track. The good news is it's gone down, but we're going to walk through that one first. Because it wasn't on the spreadsheet, that's why I don't want to.
Okay. Yeah, so after our most recent payments, our debt's down to 4.2 million.
Yeah, so that's good.
Which is fantastic. I mean, I think on a trend we're at, I mean, certainly there's covenants on some of the debts where we can't pay them off early. But, you know, our ultimate goal is to drive that debt down to nothing, because we're, we're paying, like, out of general fund, about $400,000 a year in, in debt payment. Once we're able to capture that, those dollars back into the general fund, we'll be able to put that more into the services related to our parks and our streets, and, you know, those, those are probably the core two that we really want to continue to focus on over the next five, seven years.
What was the total to begin with?
When I started, we were 9.6, wasn't it?
About 9.6, 9.5.
Yeah, when Megan and I started, 2013. So we're, we're down below half of that. The goal to get to, to zero in the next four to six years.
My other question, I'm sorry. I'm going back to, it's page 23 for the animal control. So at the very bottom, the shade structure and shelter, I was just wondering if they were having another, something else built out there, or if that was the same thing that we talked about two years ago, or, I was just curious if this.
Yeah, so, you know, Jennifer and I go back and forth on that. You know, if they keep the population down, then that other shade structure on the north side, you're talking about not really needing that. And so really, what she and I talked about is other meaningful projects out there, because that facility's now hitting that point, it's about 10 years old, where we really need to be putting money back into it so that it doesn't erode. The shade structure was more from a population standpoint with the pets, so that the dogs out in the north part of the property, you know, would have shade when they're outside. The crematory that gets heavy use, we've had some issues with that, some part replacement. I think that's what, $3,200?
32 to 42, depends on, you know, get those other two.
That we're having to, to put into that to keep it functioning.
I was just curious, if it was the same thing that we talked about, who knows, it seemed like, it seemed like a couple of years ago.
It'd be the second half of it. It isn't one part.
They did one half, yes, they did this out there, which is close to that play area that is built.
That's all, I was just curious about it.
Next question I have is, I know Megan's been working on sorting out the fund balance, and that's taken more longer than planned. So kind of what's the schedule for that?
I'll speak for you, but I will.
So I'm just waiting for some of the last remaining invoices and, uh-oh, what didn't we kind of plan for to come in? I have an estimated, but I want to make it more clear to council. So for the beginning of January, you'll have more accurate numbers. There's a lot that goes into place. I mean, I could tell you that right now we have a $1.2 million fund balance, but I would be lying to you because there's stuff that's still pending, that was encumbered, it hasn't been paid. But also out of that amount, there is a lot of what's already been committed funds. It's, it's money that, you can't use it for just general purposes, it's not, it's restricted, it's not unrestricted. So, I'd like to have accurate numbers, so as you guys plan your specific projects, you know that, oh, I have one, no, you have 600,000 to play with.
So, the good news out of this is, I wanna paraphrase what you said. We have a balanced budget of 13.361 million dollars. It does not require any money from a fund balance. It also does not add any additional money to our reserve. But, once you complete the fund balance reconciliation process, which you expect to do in January, that will give the flexibility to look at what you've talked about, Eric, probably wanting to spend or recommending to spend a little bit more money on the roads than what is currently in this budget at roughly 1.3 million dollars.
Correct.
Have I said that correctly?
Correct. So, the roads, and then let me layer on to that. There are two specific larger park projects that I think we wanna contemplate. One is a splash pad, it's about a $200,000, $197,000 project. If the city were to commit 50,000, we have relative confidence at Hermian Basin, grant foundation there, guy, I forget guy's last name. They, they'll pony up 50. And then there's another entity in the Midland-O'Gaza area, another foundation we believe will pony up a second 50. And then Friends of Big Bend Park will raise the other 50. So, for a quarter of the price, we get a $200,000 splash pad. The other park project that I'm, you know, super committed to, I know Councilor Escudero's not here, but I, I've asked the team to pull together a turnkey project for Pueblo and Web. So, when we look at Pueblo and Web, how do we do it all at once? What's the price of that? And then can we allocate to get that all done? Because if you, if you sit up there in Jackson City, and you go up on a mountain, you look down, and you think about that quadrant of the city, that southeast quadrant, there's not real play places for the kids. And to be able to build that up would be tremendous. And by bringing on a grants coordinator, what I would propose that we think about, this is what I'll propose to council, is that, once we have that number, the city will allocate half the dollars for it, and then let's go find grant money out there to cover the other half, and then let's do all the project at once and help those kids in that area. So, that's the other kinda high bar project that we're really looking at.
What do we have, two parks there that aren't really being utilized? Was it just the one big one?
It's really just that one big space.
Were the trees are all planted across the field?
And they've, Parks Ward met out there in October, they've done a whole lockup of a plan. I've asked them to price that out.
Like a playgrounds?
Part of it's a playground, part of it's a, actually, a basketball court. There's a pavilion, gazebo, and it's not even gazebo, I mean, it's a hundred-foot mall. I mean, a big, with grills out the front. And a walking path around the entire park, and then feed into the middle part where the play areas are. We certainly would transplant those trees to other parts in the park where it makes sense. But Kirsten and Ektah and Marcy are off working on pulling that full price together. So, I think that would be a great addition.
Okay, and then the next question or his comment is, you might wanna share with council thoughts on what we'll call the longer-term capital plan.
So, one of the things that we provided, you know, a minimal five-year plan a couple of weeks ago. We're working back through what that longer-term, five-year capital plan looks like. So that when we walk into the 2021 budget cycle, council will have a fully vetted plan in their hands when those surveys go out in the May-June timeframe. Alongside that, you know, in shorter term, the water, wastewater is of heightened importance for us. So, Scott's gonna address the team here December 10th. But then his 90-day plan, so which will come up in January, he's really gonna be looking at what the next three to four to five years looks like for the capital purchase program. So, I think we're gonna wanna really queue in on that too. So, I really want us to muscle through this year, have heightened visibility, but then from a planning perspective, be real thorough in our five-year plan as we approach the May-June timeframe next year. And ultimately, I think getting the streets going again and getting that 25-30 blocks rebuilt, getting some of the, you know, 100, 100.5 block seal-coated, that's gonna be fantastic. If you go by true value, you see what Keith and Lance Jarrett are doing today and tomorrow. They're putting a, like a hot mix down on Bob's parking lot there. That's the type of concept that we're thinking about through the alleys this year. We may go a little thicker than that because we've got certainly the trash trucks going through there. Keith and I, I met Keith out there today and was talking to him. So, you know, how we craft and do that this year, and then we carry on the next four or five years. All I got.
Eric, just another minor observation. On page 21, line item 0202. Assuming we're gonna hire a human resources person for half a year or part-time. But what I find is that the insurance, 0202 insurance, it was proposed originally at $469, and then the final projected budget is 4,200. Why the difference?
Okay, so, the original budget, when we had an HR person, did not need insurance. So, the original budget was for the Hartford side of it, which is what the city pays for life insurance. We didn't really budget any type of health insurance. A part-time person has been hired, and their salary is split actually between two different departments. So, the health insurance is split between two different departments. That's only half a year's insurance, or half a person.
Just that I found the number difference.
Because we didn't pay any type of insurance before.
One of the other pieces, Councilor Lewis, you brought up in the workshop was around the Hispanic Cultural Center. One of the things that Chris Ruggi and I are working on from a concept phase is, if you look at our visitor center here in Alpine, that walking tour is probably the most popular thing. When you look around on the weekends, and even weekdays, it's amazing how many people are carrying that map, going from place to place to place. And so, what I talked to Chris about was this concept of, can we have a Hispanic cultural walking tour? Where we direct people, whether it's walking or in a car, to the Centennial School, to the county courthouse, to the museum, to the Catholic Church, and other key places in town where we celebrate our Hispanic cultural and heritage. I did visit with Mary Bones, director of the museum. They are in the process of replacing one of their displays or one of their quadrant areas. And I think they're gonna run with that concept up there too. And so, this could be a right, you know, really nice segue into promoting the Hispanic heritage in our community by giving somebody something tangible, that pamphlet that they can use that to tour the community, where we as a city don't have to carry the burden of a higher cost of running the facility, but we give the experience to those who are interested. You know, I'm always touched when I go through the Centennial School and you look at the history. And so, I think what we'll find is that with the four key institutions plus others, we'll be able to develop something really, really solid. Good start.
Well, and it actually has, there's some sidewalks that have the bricks that kinda give you a little history of what happened within that block. And then we've got Murphy Street and the street before that, where the Valdez historical home is. Where the brown, what is it, Brown Bag now? That's the little nursery right down the corner where the Raspa used to be. That also was a historical grocery store for Valdez. So, there's all that right in that area, you know, the track all the way up towards the Catholic Church. And then, I think there's a little bit of history with the Community Center as well.
So, we're working on that right now.
So, given this, what's the sequence following this meeting? What's next from moving from our current budget to the proposed amended budget?
So, what we have to do is we have to take this packet here, we've gotta go find that contract with the Crisis Center, layer in those dollars. We'll have to adjust some others, I'll make it up with them, a little spreadsheet, send it out to the group here, so you know where we made those adjustments. Then on the December 10th, we'll have the first reading of the amended budget. And then follow up January 7th with the public hearing and the second reading. Alongside that, by January, we'll be able to have good rock solid on the fund balances and be able to make recommendations for additional allocations for specific projects in the January-Febuary timeframe. And then we're gonna, you know, as Megan stated before, we're gonna roll into the kinda once-a-month reporting back to council. She'll probably present every couple of months, but at least get you all the financial documentation every month, okay? I didn't think we were gonna take a full hour and a half. I felt like Megan did a fantastic job, I will give her all the credit for pulling this together. We do certainly appreciate the feedback from the workshop a couple of weeks ago, it was very helpful, all the inputs, and pulling this together.
I can say, kudos to Megan and all the folks that helped, another good guest of another year.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, thank you very much, good report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, second. Call me to order. And we'll have an invocation. Mike, please stand and defend yourself for God.
Blessed is our God, now and ever unto the ages of ages, amen. Peace be unto all. Let us pray to the Lord, Christ our God. Send down your Holy Spirit, on all of us here present. The Holy Spirit, who is, who is, who is, who is all truth, who gives all truth. And sanctify them by your truth, you are the truth. Guard our city council and all our community in all truth, in our love for one another as we have been commanded to love one another, to serve and make decisions through the common good of all. We also pray at this time of Thanksgiving for our city council and for all those who service. And we pray that we'll have a successful art walk. The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God the Father, and the communion of the Holy Spirit be with you all. Peace be with you all.
Sorry.
Let's have legends.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our executive elect, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
City Executive, you have a form?
Mayor, we do have a form, and the notice was posted at 5:00 PM on November 15th, 2019.
And we will entertain public comments at this time. Anybody? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move on. And I do have a couple of presentations. And the person to Scott Perry, is Scott in here? There he is. Certificate of Achievement, Scott Perry, Public Utility Department, in recognition of your accomplishments of successfully passing your infrastructure disaster management from Texas A&amp;M, signed this 19th day of November 2019. Andres Ramos, Mayor, City of Alpine, Texas. Congratulations, sir.
Spinal scot. Pride.
And the next one is for Eric Aldis. Certificate of Achievement, Eric N. Aldis, Public Utility Department, in recognition of your accomplishments of successfully passing your TCEQ, Class D Water Operator, signed this 19th of November 2019. Andres Ramos, Mayor, City of Alpine, Texas. Congratulations. Great, sir, appreciate it. Great accomplishments of these two individuals. And we'll go with city mayor report, I don't have any city attorney report.
Mayor and council, the questions come up regarding travel reimbursement. And the charter provides that the mayor and council shall be reimbursed for the traffic, for their travel expenses. And that's what has normally been done in the past. It's been brought to our attention that there's also been, like on the previous administration, credit cards given to council members. And that's not a reimbursement, that's in advance, or it's not set up in the charter. And so, my recommendation is to read that we follow the charter and the plan of the council on travel, get reimbursed for their expenses. It's if you, in the past, if y'all have been paid in advance, like for DM. And then there's also reimbursement that could start getting into a gray area of somebody could think it's something like that. I know that none of y'all would do that. But the safest way to deal with it is straight up according to the charter reimbursement.
You gotta find receipts. How about the, your hotel motel, how would that be?
The same. Pay the hotel, have the receipts, you get paid back, I don't understand.
Yeah, because some of these hotels, we think, could be some pricey.
And I know that's a little bit of a burden, but it's just, that's sort of the way corporations work. It's sort of the easy way to deal with the city, to pay out money in advance is really not the right way. Reimbursement, and that follows the charter.
Okay.
The same for DM and mileage, sir.
You wouldn't get it for DM, but you get reimbursed for mileage. So, whatever the IRS rate for mileage is, like 58 cents a mile. Turn in, you drive to Austin for a meeting, you'll get reimbursed for 800 miles or whatever the mileage is, whatever the official. And hotel rooms, if you have the rest, eat, you have the restaurant, you got a receipt for it, you get reimbursed.
So, at the end of travel, the travelers would submit a travel voucher that specifies all?
Specifies all of that. Specifies all of that, has a receipt for it all, it's turned in to the city. Megan would review it. It's all, all the receipts are there, she would check the witness.
And if you could provide us a per diem so we know?
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
It's actually on the website. If you just go into per diem for 2020, and then it's gonna ask you what city you're going to, and then it calculates it from meals to lunch to dinner, and then your first and last.
On the expense of the city.
Yeah, you just get online.
It's not a, it's not a per diem. I mean, the charter contemplates actual and necessary.
Actually expenses, I'm sorry, per diem is totally different.
So, you know, if you think about it, if you go out, you know, you're at a conference and you go to a normal restaurant that would be there and you buy a normal meal and submit that expense, your hotel, pay for that, submit it as a normal expense. On return, submit the mileage to and from and any incident mileage that you drove around in that community. And then all of that would be reimbursed. We're cutting checks every Friday. So if you put it on a credit card, by the time your payment comes, you'll probably have your check back.
I think that's what we did when that first came on board in 16.
From a clarification standpoint, alcohol is not allowed, correct? That's not allowed in schools.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, city manager report.
You've got one more.
No, my personnel, I'm still dealing with a couple of follow-ups on some personnel complaints I'm working with and responding to the UEC on that. And another, also another complaint, personnel. If those require resolution, if they're brought to the council, we'll do that, we'll review them.
So I think you might have it ready by next month or?
Yeah.
So we had, there's a letter in our package, you're gonna address that the next week here.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, sir? Broke.
Yeah, I can, I can address that now, I actually want to. Mayor and council, there was a letter that you have in your package dated October 7th, 2019, from former HR Director Brooke Upchurch. And she made several complaints. But the, one of the questions I had regarding that letter, mayor, was she said that she was writing that letter as requested. So I presume you requested her to write the letter?
No. No, she gave me a letter, she called me, said she had a letter because she was filing a complaint. Okay, so that's how that went.
Okay.
It says right up front, I am writing this letter as requested.
Yeah, I saw it.
So you're saying that is not true?
Yeah, I didn't request it. Okay, no.
The, it is true that she does point out that Section 3.10 of the charter talks about that there shouldn't be any interference with administration. But the fact that Mr. Stevens, she points out that Mr. Stevens was discussing employee issues with two city employees. And I discussed that with Councilor Stevens, that there wasn't any direction of these employees. I mean, a city like Alpine, I'm sure that you, any of the members of the council may have occasional interactions with city employees as the leaders of the city. But unless the employees were being directed to do something by a council member, that's not a violation of the charter.
I have a question, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. If she's an ex-former employee, why are we dealing with this now? Or do we even have to listen to it?
You really don't. I mean, it's, the investigation that Mr. Zimmer and I did on this showed that there wasn't anything to these complaints as far as the allegations that somebody was being hired through favoritism or somebody was being threatened or coerced or all these other things that are in there, none of those things happened.
Yeah, and Councilor Alavis had asked that we put this on the agenda and talk about it, so.
So the.
So does that mean if we have other former ex-employees that we're supposed to be listening to their whatever?
No, I don't think so, but because Councilor Alavis wanted this heard, that's why it's here. Not because we think there's any meat to these issues. The, you know, we investigated what she's trying to say, that there was direction to fire people. These things didn't happen, we investigated that. There's questions regarding Council Escovedo, we looked into that. That didn't happen in the way that is being stated here in this letter. It's basically, it's sort of a complaint letter from a disgruntled former employee, not showing any proof of any true misconduct on the part of any of the council members that we've combined.
So your conclusion is this letter, there is no truth to what she's saying, including what the mayor just said, he did not request it, and none of these statements that she made here are true?
It's sort of like what we see in Washington. I think some of these things happened somewhat, but not in the way that she is being characterized here, you know? Just the same way that, you know, I think Councilor Stevens, I think you probably talked to Johnny Marcus, or you probably talked to Mr. Reyes. That doesn't mean you, if you had a conversation with him, that's fine. If you directed him or ordered him around, that might be different.
Well, in those two specific cases, I throw that over to the acting city.
Right, so I mean, you did everything right, I'm just saying that, back to your statement, that's true, the allegations did not pan out. The allegations are not supported by the facts, and they've been investigated by me and Mr. Zimmer. And they're sort of trying to spin something into something that didn't go. It's really not there.
I might want to add too that, you know, as I kind of bought through the interference with administration, you know, my previous four years and starting back in the city, generally speaking, if there was a concern with interference with administration, that complaint would come from me or Cynthia when she was in the interim, or it wouldn't come from someone else. If there was something I was doing against the law, then that complaint should be brought to Rod or to Rod, unfortunately.
Just to clarify a point, and I think, so that maybe we can be a little bit straight on the issue. Apparently an ex-employee, if I'm reading this correctly, wrote the letter, it was notarized, basically alleging potential, possible violations of the charter by two of her councilmen.
And then?
And then alleged. And it specifies in the letter, she named the councilman, she also named the incidences. Again, the idea whether they were true or not. And as you well know, I tried to bring up the issue in the executive session at the previous meeting. And of course, the issue was pulled out by the city attorney with the idea to investigate. And then you would report to us. To be honest, that was referred, that had stayed in executive session, and then we could maybe take some action to investigate. But since it's out, it seems to me like this young lady who is a resident of the City of Alpine has every right to, to write and express her opinions and thoughts and look for answers that she's looking for to, to get some clarification and not in a way, you know, strictly in another run. Transparency is important to any governmental institution. I, the only thing I can see is, okay, she wrote this letter, and apparently she wrote it to the mayor. Question is, what happens now? Will you prepare response toward the city, or the mayor has to do that, to respond to the individual, to our visitor?
I don't know that there's any response to the, to the, to Miss Upchurch required. My responsibility was to work with the city manager to investigate allegations to see if there's any meat to, meat to.
I'm saying there isn't. So at this point, legally, if the individual feels like she wants to pursue the matter, she can seek on her own conditional legal advice?
Anybody can do anything, cities are basically immune from suit in general pursuant to state law. People can write letters to the editor, people can get on Facebook, all of us can get complained against in the public forum. It happens, but as far as a legal violation of the charter by the, by the city council members, it's a violation of the letter, we didn't play it.
But she has that right, that she wants to pursue the matter?
Everybody has, just look, look on, go home and turn on the news. Let's see, let's see everybody exercising that right.
I'm actually pleased this is a public forum because we had issues in executive session before where we said, no, we're just gonna dismiss it outright, couldn't bring it. So my view is always bring it forward, put it out in public forum. That's the only way we actually get true transparency.
Thanks, sir. City man.
Is this when I say, how about Eric Alvarez's shirt, go cowboy? I had to put that plug in. Love the shirt. Eddie said it.
Are you a cowboy fan?
Definitely.
Oh, my gosh.
Dallas Cowboys? I'm from Dallas, and I'm not even a Dallas fan.
I'm not a Dallas Cowboys fan.
Maybe if they won a game.
We have issues here.
All right. We'll, we'll call out art walk every, every chance we can. Really focusing on our 180-day plan update. Lorena, who you'll hear from, relative to Municipal Port tonight, she's also leading our HR team. She's halftime Municipal Port mornings, halftime Human Resources in the afternoon. Really fantastic addition to the team, natural fitness position. We're also surrounding her with others in the state who have high experience in Human Resources, so really glad to have her filling our role for us. Tomorrow starts our first session, Leadership Training. Really individual personal expectations, program itself, management versus leadership. So super excited, we'll be hosting that over at the Centennial School. Really, really excited to see the collaboration with Liz Pena and her team. As I've talked about this program we're implementing, we've got other organizations in town that are certainly interested in implementing something similar to this, or copying and taking this whole program. Moving forward from Communications Plan, we've scheduled the third series of our coffee with city manager, December 3rd. Thank you to Don Wetterhour, he'll be at the Public Library this time. Also had the opportunity to speak at Leadership Big Ben last week with two of your counterparts from Martha, two of the city councillors from Martha, were on the panel as well. Fantastic interaction with that team and fifteen going through that program. Also got to speak with the Maryland High School students at the Christian School last Friday. And, you know, it's really neat to see the youth in our community and how they're so absorbing different traits and characteristics and how to, how to develop themselves, how to become more active in the community through volunteers and leadership. And then certainly, we continue to strive to attend all board commission, community meetings as scheduled allows. As, you know, our team's rebuilding, we've got more and more of the team members attending those board commission meetings as well. Had a good chance to speak with Ivan Heiney this morning, some of you have voiced concerns with the changeover with the trains here in town. Interestingly enough, Ivan told me, he says, you know, we've had five local managers in the last five years. And sometimes they get it right, you know, it's that westbound traffic, you gotta stop before this street. Eastbound, you know, they can stop at the platform, but the westbound, you gotta, you gotta stop before, so. We're gonna set that up. Actually, Chief Mark and I will meet with, with the local person. And we also started that discussion again on the white zone, so we'll work through that. Certainly, community events, I mean, it's a great time to be in Alpine. The Kenny Art Walk, Winter Wonderland, Bray, the Mount Country Christmas, all of those people are coming together nicely. I think our public works team has been in overdrive preparing the city as well. And then we will have a city Christmas party Tuesday, December 17th, please hold the date. Not only are we inviting employees, but all elected officials, spouses, and all the people that represent us on the boards and commissions, their spouses. And then a couple other special guests that have done a lot for us in the community in the first national tour. So we'll have, post that here in the city center. Streets, you know, we sent that, that list out yesterday. Eddie and I are going out later this week to really kind of narrow down what we think are that top 35 or 40 streets that need to be repaid and the top 125 to 150 that we'd like to seal coat. We'll combine that with the intelligence and the thoughts on December 10th and have our go-forward plan for 2020. If any of you would like to go out for, you know, an hour or so with Eddie and myself, or just Eddie or just me, we're glad to schedule that with you and look at some of the thought process. I'd also encourage you to go by True Value, if you're new, and look what Keith and Lance Jarrett are doing over there as they're repaving Bob's parking lot. So we're putting down hot mix overlay there, so I'd certainly go check that out. Big shout out for Stephanie on the inactive billing accounts, you know, sharing that with council. First, first round of letters, she's got some payments in, but that big, that $2,200, that fault water purchase, she was able to get ahold of, of that client and we're sending a check in. So super happy with that, she's got multiple other calls coming in, people intending to pay. Those that don't, we'll work through the plan and move those balances to their existing accounts. Those that don't have an existing accounts, we'll move them to our collection room. Boards and commissions, you know, we've kind of talked about those enhancements, like to set that either on December 10th or January 7th so that we can work through some of those language changes and updates. If any of you have a preference, let me know. Waste Mart Treatment Plant, Stan's gonna present to us December 10th and give us a real status there, kind of with his 60-day findings. I think the most important thing that he and I talked about this last week is, is this program where we can really combine all of our open orders and then work to remediate. It'll, it'll bring somebody, a detailed inspector from TCQ, but what it does is that Alpine is being surveyed under, and we put an action list together, and then we just go remediate those. If we have any associated fines with them, we would then build an SCP project, or supplemental project. Scott will add more color to that next meeting, but I like to keep wastewater treatment plant up there, front and center focused for us. Visitor tourism update, worst art walk, some of the great media activity that we've seen this last month, Texas Highways, True West, Southern Hospitality, Texas Southern Territory and others, these are magazines that are drawing, we feel draw people to Alpine, certainly they're active with their social media presence. Chris hosted an arts confab up at the university this past week, with the real idea to not only celebrate art in the community, to find these little pocket places, and then how do you introduce that also to guests and to citizens through that. We also did get our letters out to the Airbnb hosts this past week, and very enlightening. Couple, you know, several folks have come in, worked with Geo, and filling out their packets, a couple negative responses. The fact of the matter is, you know, we need everybody to get on board, it is state law, and so we'll work through that. Chris and I also did have a discussion with another gentleman who's in contact with union reps. They work, would like to work with Alpine as a case study, so no fee to us, to not only work through our implementation with these letters, what do we do for those folks that don't sign up? How do we then re-craft our ordinances, so that they're clear and specific? The whole idea is to get these short-term rentals, or STRs, start paying taxes for Alpine. And so, super excited about that. We, you know, we also looked at THLA, there's some work you can do with Airbnb, where they'll collect the tax for you, but they don't guarantee they're collecting it from everyone, and you have to sign a waiver that you can't complain, you have to accept what they send you. You know, our amount is, we're talking 60, 70 people, I think we can manage that in-house, instead of just accepting what Airbnb gives us. And that's not to throw Airbnb under the bus, I think their program is very helpful, very useful for people that are using it, so. Great gig being Alpine, wanted to give shout-outs to Carius Blackman, for all of her work that she does for Gallery 9. That's it? Questions? Thank you, sir. And we'll go with city staff updates. Okay, sir. Adelina. Oh, she's got a grab. Yep, you're up, you're up. You were there.
Hi, good evening. Well, in your packet, there's two reports, last year's report, and total number of visitors, and the total numbers for the landfill, and the second is the first two months of this year, and three months for the land. Do you have any questions, Alvin?
It's looking good over there.
Thank you. And just to let you know, we're working with local scientists from the Far West Texas Water Planning Group, and hopefully some professors at Saul Ross, and scientists in the area, on a conservation strategy concept, for like the coconut area. This is really preliminary, we just had our first meeting on Monday. The goal is to include two strategies into the plan, and it's, they won't hold us accountable, but once those strategies are in the plan, we can ask for funding later to... The first strategy is to reuse the treated effluent, the city of Alpine Water Treatment Plant, and once the TCQ firm comes for review, it could be rewarded to include these projects, and reuse that water. And the second strategy is to delineate and quantify the watersheds draining into Alpine Creek, and estimate how much water we have to work with conservatively, conservatively, so for pre-precuration, or tourism, or more scenic area for people to come out and hike. But this is really preliminary, we're just in the process of submitting this and adding, hopefully, then to the plan. And that was my...
Okay. I want to really share as well, I mean, Adelina's doing a great job with our Keep Alpine Beautiful, and we're really integrating into the environmental services, and how we're controlling waters through the town, how we're helping re-vegetate, re-beautify. Adelina has a great relationship back with Saul Ross, and so we feel like that's an important tie. She'll be presenting tomorrow morning at the, or Thursday morning, at the Brewster County Groundwater Conservation District as well, so trying to loop them in to this program as well. So hats off to her in the morning.
I'll have more information if you need this later on.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many staff are at the recycling center now?
Two, part-time.
And what are the hours?
We're Tuesday to Friday, 9 to 12, last load 11:50, and then 1 to 5, last load 4:50, and then Saturdays, 9 to 12, last load 11:50.
I was just curious, because when I go out there, there's nobody there. See, I understand it, part-time, that's okay.
We do have the city website, I think it's updated, and we have a Facebook page, but we also have trifolds. Make sure you're out there, we can give you one.
That sounds great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
So, this is not in the report, but then I love people that work in the hot earth. Where are we on our issue with the landfill, and what's the timing we expect for that? You may not be involved in the details with that from the conditions we have here.
Rod and I are meeting with the old Duncan disposal republi, Thursday of this week. And then the plan is to initiate the additional, we've got the boat back on potholing, about $5,000, to pothole the rest of that area out there, and then we'll, from there, we'll issue a letter to the mayoral. I want to get that done before, really before December 15th.
Great. Thanks.
Any more questions?
Any more?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You too. We'll move on to public hearings. City manager.
First public hearing we have is to obtain citizens' views and comments on ordinance 2019-11, -2, sale of property of .900 acres of property up to 1,000, Lot West, Lot Carter Avenue, west of 14th Street to the South Orient Road, and headed through portion of West Lot Carter Avenue, worth of Lot 5, Lot 1, wall in second edition to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, access to Ned Allen, 671 Church, public hearing, so we want to make compliments of the citizens.
Anybody? And that's that little wedge we're getting, right? On the road.
Yes, sir. So, this is not a public comment, this is my question, I shot you a note, Cynthia, in the, it says, "Public hearing, the sale of property of .9 acres," it's .09 acres.
It's even smaller.
Yeah, it's a 10, yeah, it's not quite a 10 acre. Anyway, and that's replicated a couple of spots, but I just want to make sure you got that first.
Is that what the survey gave us?
Yes, yes, it's a .09 acres.
Yeah, so I went up there, but...
Because when I looked at the prices for an acre, what a deal.
Yeah, it's not much, except for the driveway, that's about it.
So, no comments on that one. The second one is a public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments concerning the application for Nadi Sanchez, requests for rezoning from R4 to C1 for a new acre, legal restriction being all of Lot 67, in the south, 83.01 feet of Lot 3, 4, and 5, Lot 34, Hancock Edition to Alpine South Railway. According to plat recorded in slot run 12, plat records, Brewster County, Texas, record owner is Nadi Sanchez.
Any comments?
Thank you. The third one is a public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments to review the performance regarding the completed Texas CDVG contract number 7217000 fire hydrants installation project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jerika, your administrator for existing CDVG grants. TDA's CDVG regulations require a public hearing be held prior to submitting the close-up documents to TDA, you know, just to review the performance of the fire hydrants grant, and to get citizens' input. So, I'll just give you a little background, and try to follow the standard, what was done. The city of Alpine, in program 217, was awarded a CDVG grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture, in the amount of $275,000, to install 42 fire hydrants on the South Sea Quadrant of Alpine, which is known as Newtown, or Little Meadow. The city contract with the state was effective on December 1st, 217, and terminates next week, November 30th. The city contributed the amount of $13,750 as a cash match towards the project. The project, I'm not going to find that, due a bid twice, the project. The first bid advertisement was for 36 fire hydrants. Only one bid was received, and it was for $315,450, which was 105,450 over the budget, over the construction budget. So, that bid was rejected by the council. The project was redesigned for 31 fire hydrants, which included 23 fire hydrants as a base bid, and eight fire hydrants as the alternate bid. One bid was received from Half-Construction Company here in Alpine, for the base bid, so for 23 fire hydrants. With the base bid for 23 fire hydrants, there wasn't enough money in the construction budget to award that, so the city went ahead and issued a change order to remove two fire hydrants to the bid, was approved by TDA, so that brought the fire hydrants down to 21. So, the contract that was awarded was for $209,000, let's see here, $209,910 for 21 fire hydrants. That project was completed on October 25th, and you did an excellent job at construction, and also Johnny and his people, the water, I mean, water sewer, they were able to help it to the engineer, and to Mr. ... He turned to Mr. Turner, helping them out, trying to locate those lines, there were new lines, etc. As far as the budget, the CDVG construction budget, the state funds were $196,250, and then you add your $13,750 match, which brought it to 210. Public spend was a, public spend was a $209,900, so there's a balance of $90 left, and see, in state bunch, which will be returned to TDA. Engineering was $48,500, $48,500 was spent. Administration was $30,025, $30,025 was spent. Basically, any questions?
So, we underestimated the cost of the 42, or 41 fire hydrants?
Yeah. When the engineer prepared his budget, back in 217, back then, they were averaging between $4,000 and $5,000. The bids we received were over $9,500, $9,300, $9,400 for fire hydrants, so everyone of them. This happened, this happened at all over West Texas, with the CDVG funds, due to the oil, the oil boom, the bridge coming away.
So, we might have to revisit it before we finalize a final budget on them.
Well, we had that thing back in February, we had a whole discussion, we reallocated, in fact, it came back, three times, canceled.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, originally, we should have, you know.
Well, I see, here's, I see, I hear that also.
Well, the engineer prepares a budget allocation, and that was coming back then, 217, but all of a sudden, I guess the boom got bigger.
The good news is, we got 21 fire hydrants.
Got that. Any comments? Okay. Thank you, Jared, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department written reports, for the funds, etc. The following are items of routine and administrative nature. Council has been purged with background and supportive portrayal of each item, and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote, without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration.